Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna bring the November 12th, 2020 Dunbarton Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. All three selectmen are present. Town Administrator is present and the president is present. We have Leo Martell video recording the meeting minutes, so you can see him on YouTube, and Linda Nickerson's gonna download those onto the website YouTube and the town. I've got some old business here. Approval of November 5th meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of November 5th as amended.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna open up for a quick public comment, and then we'll go on from there. Leo, you got anything? Are you doing Tom, anything for a public comment?
Could I ask the board to accept him at the public comment because he had, there was an email that came through my office?
Yep.
And I inadvertently left him off the agenda, but it's not a quick subject, so I think that he could probably address it in a couple of weeks.
I don't have any problem with that. Do you guys have any issue with that?
No.
Okay, Tom, come on up.
Just a stand-up.
The... Tom, just for the, you just state your name.
Yep, Tom Cassano, Temple Court Lane here in Dunbarton.
Okay.
I'll skip all the credentials.
Good, Tom. I ran out of room.
Yeah. The, we had come up with the idea, a week or so ago, with the garden club, we would assume there's not gonna be a tree lighting ceremony this year, so we thought we would expand the decorating of the commons, that way people could enjoy the, you know, the festive look to the commons, people can come visit anytime. We've also communicated with the school to send an email, copy email to Shelley and to Jesse of PTO to see if the school kids would get involved, maybe they would make some decorations which could be on, on the commons as well, so that they would feel like they're participating in it. That would be one way we kind of keep the, a little bit of the holiday tradition going. They could be good for, you know, the whole month of December. We, we knew we, at one time, had a budget for the tree lighting, so we didn't know if we could use that budget money instead for the event to buy the lights to decorate the commons with. What we're thinking of for a theme is kind of, maybe, we put Enid Larson in charge of this, and we all know her decorating talent, so we're thinking a lot of little white mini lights around some of the hardwood trees, the bandstand, you know, with some more mini lights, and maybe some icicles, of course, the Christmas tree in the middle of the bandstand as usual, and maybe some more small lights right in front of the library itself. She wanted to use pretty much all white lights on the trees. She said that establishes kind of very classy look, but yet very dreamy, so when people are there, you know, it's kind of, gets that holiday feeling to it. We put everything on timers, so they would be shut off by 9:00 PM each night. I did some quick calculations and estimate that the maximum electric consumption would be about forty to fifty dollars for the whole season. With LED lights, they practically lose all electricity. So, the school was, thought it was a great idea, PTO thought it was a great idea, so I figured I'd come run it by you guys to see.
Did you guys speak with Mary at all, or from the library, no?
Uh, no, not yet.
She's usually all for something like that.
And what about the building, Tom? Were you gonna do any lighting on the building? Cause we just put a very expensive paint job on there, just hoping not to have a bunch of nail holes into that.
Well, we should get the nail gun out there like Clark Griswold, you know? Uh, no, we were gonna, we were gonna avoid the building.
Okay.
Possibly, you know, I'm gonna let the people use their imagination, but they might wrap the columns with a little mini light or something, but no, you know, no outlining the building or anything like that.
What is in that budget, three fifty or something, for the tree lighting ceremony? I know it's pretty.
It used to be around three hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You're probably gonna have to invest in power cords as well?
Yeah, well, for this year, I'll just use my power cords. Oops, sorry about that. That's my wife wanting to know where I am. And, hey, how did I know that? The, I got plenty of power cords, so this year we'll just use my cords. And we got the timers, we got a lot of stuff, so this year, pretty much, it will just be for lights. If we don't have enough money to do what we wanna do with the town's portion of the budget at the garden club, we'll kick in some, and Jesse from the PTO said she was gonna check with the boards here if they would kick in some more. I'd like to try to buy a little bit better quality lights than the cheapest of the cheap, because the good quality ones can go five or 10 years, and the real cheap old ones, you know, you get two, maybe three out of them, and then they just kinda disintegrate and fall apart. But yeah, that's, that's about our whole presentation. We'd just like to upscale the decorations, make it look pretty.
I don't have any issues. What are you guys' actual thoughts?
I don't have an issue only because you guys are gonna be doing the work, right?
Well, we thought.
It's a good investment, you know, I realize, cause if you're, it's your function, but it's a good investment of, of the money to do something, cause there's nothing this year.
Yeah, there's something going on. And what we would do at the end season, of course, we'll take it down, we'll carefully package, repackage all the lights, store them upstairs, downstairs, where they need to go, so they'll be ready to go for next year. And if they, if it looks real good, but a little sparse this year, then maybe next year we can add to it a little bit.
Are you gonna do that on midnight to 31st, take it down?
Uh, probably 31st. Probably the afternoon of the first.
Oh yeah, great. Tom, I think you got consensus from the board to go ahead with it.
Okay.
I'd just like to make sure that you make every, you know, stay away from the main.
Yeah, I'll make it not to.
No perforations.
Yeah, I guess, we spent a lot of money doing that, right, and I'd like to see it last a few more years.
Yeah, we, we won't even put any Gorilla Tape on it, just.
All right.
No holes in the library.
Yeah, I think, you know, wrapping something on the columns on the entryway is fine, it's just the core of the building there.
Yeah, it looks good, and I know it was very expensive to get it all fixed up.
Yeah.
And for a child, seeing something that's all lit up at night, you know, might put something in, some spirit.
Yeah, I'm hoping that they, each class would make their own decorations, maybe put their name on it, and then they would drag their parents down, say, there's mine right there, that icicle there has got my name on it. That way, they would feel like they were part of it.
Yeah. Okay, great.
The only thing I'm concerned with this stuff, any inclement weather, stuff is blown around. Just, I think you have a contingency plan for, you know, severe windstorm, then you gotta go out there and recheck everything. So, have that delineation or plan to outrecheck it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll assign somebody that task.
Okay.
Probably somebody that does a lot of the cemetery work.
You don't like that idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, Tom.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment? Chief, anything? Be good for now? Okay. We're gonna go right to new town business, and we've got the, a couple of departments coming in front of us. We've got the welfare budget discussion to start for 2021 season. You guys all have a worksheet on that?
So, I've been working with these departments to either advise them, answer questions and whatnot, and both of these individuals that are before you tonight, both felt that with the minimal changes that they had to their budget and the fact that COVID is still active, that they didn't see or feel a need that they should be present at the meeting tonight, so they've asked me to present their account numbers for their budget to the board.
Okay, and Jeannie Zimgronski?
Yep, Zimgronski, yep. You're welcome right there.
Yep. She's given us a brief letter here stating that she's planning on leaving the budget unchanged. She wrote 2020, but for 2021.
Yep.
So, it looked like it worked with all of the things she stated here that she had to work with on the different people in town. And she's currently working on food basket program for Dunbarton families and COVID-19 non-perishable foods. And Joe Maurice, an instrumental, will help her to go consistent. To store the food in the firehouse from the fire chief. I wanna thank her for her hard work and enthusiasm.
Don't get changed to the budget day, would be the, any pay fees will include that, in terms.
They make a good team, the two of those folks.
Yeah, so I'm looking at their budget here, it's completely flat, so, which is what we'd asked for at the board, so that's, that seems good to us.
No, no, you said level funded.
Yeah, level funded. Level fully funded. All right, now we go to the building department and planning and zoning. It looks like some small adjustments on these ones. We'll start with the building department first. This year's budget was seventy-five thousand, five seventy-eight. The actual, to date, is fifty-nine thousand used. They still got twenty-one percent left there to finish out the year.
It's actually a few weeks old. That was printed on October 20th, so that probably has a few payrolls that have come out.
And next year, they're requesting seventy-seven, one seven nine. And it looks like there's a couple of changes in there on salary.
And that's because I've been asked the departments to budget one additional pay period, cause there's fifty-three weeks in there.
Oh, okay.
So you'll see an increase.
So that's pretty much their only change on the national services.
Yep.
Okay. That looks good. And it looks like the planning and zoning went down slightly.
Okay, the few changes that we decided to work on is postage. Donna has been very good about utilizing the postage machine. In the past, the administrator would either take, request a check and go down to the post office to stamp your certified mails for planning and zoning, and it costs five cents more per stamp, so there are increases. And where she can manage to do all the certifies, regular mail through the postage machine, that she, it's technically an office total budget, she's moved that money into the, I will increase my side to, to adjust for hers, cause it's hard to track the different departments using the postage machine when we go to pay and purchase stamps.
Okay, so that looks like it's reduced by almost a couple of thousand dollars. And they're, they were only at forty-nine percent of their budget just a short while ago. So I think that looks good. Do you mean, you guys have anything you wanna say on that?
No, I think it looks great.
Okay.
And they, they're actually complying with our request.
Yep.
Bobby, comments?
No.
We've got some money to accept for the Kent Canowat Town Forest Conservation Area. This money is from Donna Dunn, and she's on Gorham Pond, and she's paying for the vegetation control, three different applications for next year, 2021. The total on this was seventeen sixty-four eighty-six. And Mike, why don't you go ahead and make that mention?
Per RSA 31:95-B, paragraph, Roman numeral three B, to accept one thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents from a donation to treat vegetation control at KTFC, C.A., Town Forest Barn on Gorham Pond Road.
Seconded. Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to thank the Dunn family again for doing this vegetation control on behalf of the town that's gonna keep that area looking nice there, and it's a substantial amount of money, so.
Could we send a mayor thank you, a little thank you note?
Yep.
Yeah, that would be great, a thank you card or something.
Also, just so the board is aware of it back, when the town acquired that land that, where this foundation was, is located, it was donated from the Fong family, and part of the stipulation was that the town maintained that. So, originally, early on, the KTFC was the party that was going to manage it and oversee it, and they did a timber cut. So they have just under twenty thousand dollars in a reserve fund held with the treasure, and that money is gonna be used going forward until the money's gone to mow, treat. And so far, they've only had to use it for minimal, like, ash, maybe? There was an ash treatment of some sort that was done on the fields there, but the Duns have been very good about giving us donations to get some of the other things.
From being the selectmen's rep on their lead, I've been following it, I think that their funds might be down around half of the level they were. They're having the fields maintained now by somebody doing it for free, cause you're getting the hay off it, but they aren't paying for fertilizer, because the fields don't have much worth to the guy doing it. But the maintenance area didn't include that foundation, and that's why they weren't doing that area.
Oh.
And so Donna has donated, cause she'd liked that whole area, you know, looking better.
Yeah.
And so, their maintenance agreement was for the field maintenance around the edges and didn't include that one area, and it was kind of a catch that, you know, was let go for a period of time, and Donna's been nice enough to step up to the plate and get it looking very nice there, so. There was a little separation of that there, and they're supposed to be getting back to our board in the last year, year and a half, just because he maintains the center of the field. The edges grow up yearly and periodically, and they're talking about doing a mowing either every year, every other year around all the stone walls, so they don't get overgrown, it's not a large job, and they're supposed to come to the board for a regular, you know, five or eight hundred dollar maintenance around the edge of the fields, like the town used to pay for out of their regular budget, so. I still haven't heard anything about it, but it has been brought up before. But again, big hats off to the Dunn family for that. Okay, and we do have a copy of the check here for that, so.
Yeah.
The next one is our CRF municipal aid. This is a large amount of money. We're going to make a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion, per RSA 31:95-B, paragraph, roman numeral three, sub-paragraph A, to accept forty-seven, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-four cents from the CRF municipal aid motion. This is part of the Gulf of Wrath.
Yep, that's correct. And we do have a public hearing on that back in May of 2020. Lean's set that up there.
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Discussion.
From the general fund block?
Well, that's one of them. I just, I want someone to take credit that applied for that and put some time in.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's, Lean's office needs to be, receive some kudos for step up.
Some recognition for it, at least, you know. It's a lot of this we're going through without discussion, but this one here is, I thought it'd be important to make them recognize, cause, you know, there's somebody who puts a lot of time into.
And I was gonna bring that up, because then, and when we did have that public hearing, we did bring it up, and that was a big amount of money to get for bottom line at the end of this year.
Well, it's gonna help offset some of the, some of the expenses we've had for COVID. It's gonna help offset, you know, going into, reaching into our reserves, so, and it helps kinda rebuild any reserves that we have, because our budget's bigger this year.
Lean, did you have anything you wanted to say about it before we finish off this topic?
No, I'm just glad to see that everything that I submitted was.
Came in, right?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I was the Donnie Thomas, I wanted to see the check before I was getting too happy. And we have, thank you.
We do.
Thank you for your work, Lean.
So now you can move on.
Okay, motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda, last week, we spoke about highway contractor winter maintenance on-call stipend, and this is basically a five-hour stipend for 20 weeks in the winter, when the drivers have to be ready to go out, whether there is snow or rain or freezing rain. And if they do end up working that week, we don't pay them for those five hours, or we pay them for the balance if they don't fill those five hours. So, this is expected to be used probably between five and 10 weeks per year, under the 20 weeks. And the next thing we have to talk about here, we did talk about an amount last week, but a six or 10-wheel of the larger-sized trucks, Jeff had requested an eighty-five dollar per hour, and the one-ton trucks, he'd suggested doing a fifty-five dollar per hour, and that was how he pays them now.
Right.
Is those the amounts you guys would like to stick with?
Right, that's what we, that's what he presented last week.
Want me to hand that over?
Please. And just so the, for the record, that rate has been the maintenance pay for the last three or four years, if not longer, though that has not changed.
And for our last meeting, this will be subject to review by the road agent and board secretary at the conclusion of the season.
And that is in the meeting minutes. I checked them today.
Yep.
Today is 11:12?
Yep.
Okay. So this motion was made last week and seconded, and Lean wrote this up, and there was some revisions on it that Mike and I made, but it's very clearly written, I think, if you work on that.
Good point, it's passing it to you first.
Okay. Next thing we're gonna bring up is, Lean had brought up to me that some different offices were closing in town here for the holidays. And if the board remembers, I think two years ago, we closed our town offices on Wednesday, on November 25th, at 2:00, and Thursday, December 24th, and the 31st, at 2:00. And last year, I think we did it at noon and let the employees go home. My suggestion is to do it at 12:00 and make it, make it official for this year.
My only concern is, what's the transfer station? How would you handle that?
I did speak to Woody on that, asking if there was any preference for him, the Wednesday evening, which is Thanksgiving Eve, the guys typically would like to work that regular shift and be out at 8:00. And then the other holiday for the Christmas Eve, we usually do not affect them.
Right.
Cause they're out like after a few hours.
Okay, so the transfer station on November 25th will let them?
No changes.
No changes. And the town offices here will be affected by the rest of it.
And that would also work with the schedule that the town clerk has set for the next two months.
Yeah. And the town clerk is already posted.
I saw that, yeah.
On line, so. If her office is closed, I guess, I don't have any problem with the other ones.
Bob, do you have consensus, yes?
No, I, you know, they don't get paid if they don't work those hours at the transfer station. And if they wanna work them, that's not problematic, you know? And the rest, most of them, they're in the office building, or, you know, I think they probably like a little respite from work, so it's okay.
No, I wanna make sure that we are paying them for the, for the afternoon, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
That's, I just, Lean, I just wanna make sure that was clear to you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I'm good with that, and I guess we have consensus from the board for that, so. The next thing on the agenda, Mike, you wanna talk about some uses for this marquee sign out front of the town hall?
I was looking for a policy, if we had a policy on that, we do not. And I thought it was interesting to see a church activity advertised on our town activity. I thought there should be a separation of church and state, but obviously, we have some blurring of the lines here. And I think we have to be careful here, because if you allow a semi-commercial activity or religious activity advertised, there's no reason why a plumber could say, I wanna advertise too. And I don't think we have a policy that dictates how that should be used. And either we come up with a policy, or, I don't know, who gave the church permission to use that? And I'm concerned about that.
I don't think anybody gave anybody permission. We have a couple of people volunteering to help. I think the chief does the flag out there, and I think we have another person volunteering or two to do that signing up on there. And what I think we'd like, we should do is write up a policy that the town administrator at least reviews what they're putting up there, so that we're more aware of it, because actually, we don't know what's on there until we drive by. None of us, none of us really know, and we should actually know what's out there, so.
And the thing is, who's to stop a commercial activity saying, I wanna use that?
Right.
And the thing is, at this point, we have no policy in place, and once you open the Pandora's box of allowing a, a non-government entity to use that, what's the policy? And I'm not trying to be a screwji or anything like that, but.
Well, I just learned something new tonight, how that was funded. Lean, why don't you discuss how that was funded?
It was originally all donated from funds from the rec committee, and they contracted someone to design it, install it, and managed it. At the time, we had a rec committee, an active rec committee, and they, they came to the board, asked permission to put it on town land, and then they explained that they would like to keep it for activities for the children, or, you know, softball, basketball, all kinds of sports activities. And then in the event there wasn't anything there, that they would allow the town to post things for like the town meeting and important things for the town, as long as there was a mechanism to contact someone from the rec committee to make sure that they didn't have anything planned or pending that would, you know, be a conflict with what, with the space there. So, in past years, I was always communicating to the chair of the rec committee. They since have resigned. I have gotten a volunteer resident that is willing to help during any type of weather to post things that come through my office for town business. And then Mary tends to use it for activities for the library, which is another town entity, and it just kind of gotten really quiet with this COVID year, that there's not a lot of things that are being posted there. But I think, again, because there's no active recreation committee, it's kind of fallen by the wayside, and nobody's paying that much attention, because there haven't been as many activities needing to be posted, so.
So seeing where it's on town property and there's no rec committee, I think we should bring it back to the board, and we'll write up a quick policy that gives you the authority to review at least what's on there, so we should take a look at it, and we'll label it under the town administrator and.
I concur.
What I'd like to do also is.
Hold on, Chief has something.
No, no, Lean finished it off.
What I'd like to do also is I'll do a quick research of what was discussed when we first took over the marquee, just so that I'm not missing anything, and then kind of go the next step.
So we'll have the research to back up what you're doing and keep it going forward.
And the thing is, no, I don't, I don't mind the church putting stuff out there, but the thing is, it's really not fair to people who are not members of the church.
Well, they do their, their little A-frame from time to time.
Right.
And then they remove it at the end of the day, which works. It's a, advertises that they're open, and it, they put it on our side of the road, pointing to their, their business, but this is the first time I've seen them put anything like that on the marquee.
Oh, that was my concern.
Okay, well, we'll at least address it and.
In the meantime, do you want me to ask them to take the notice down?
I, I would recommend we research it and redress it next week.
Yeah. Just to get the background on it, Lean, just so we can make sure that we know.
We're not doing anything dumb.
We're coming from the right avenue.
Okay.
Chief, you have something?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna run the content through Lean's office, just provide with some guidelines, so she has something to go, some kind of framework to make her decisions upon, so she can't be.
Well, that's what we're gonna do with the policy.
Yeah, there hasn't been any issues in the past, it's just, this is something new that.
I didn't see what was on it, I had no idea what's on.
But you're right, the framework should. But you're right, the framework should be, there's been, you know, nothing political, nothing, there's nothing. Separation of church and state and all that, so.
No business.
No businesses, yeah. But this is, this is a semi-business, and I didn't think it was appropriate to be on town property like that.
I don't know what's on there, I didn't see it.
Well, it's the curio shop announcing their big sale. And I guess that, I didn't think that was appropriate. I mean, I might want a plumber who wants to have a sale on electrical work, a big electrical sale, come see me.
I just think that, you know, that's a community thing going on here, and I think, you know, we just need a little clarification of it, like the chief said.
Yeah, I agree.
Give the guidance to it, and that way it's not really on Lean's shoulder, they're coming to us, "Look, I let you do this, but this says this isn't allowed, and this is," and, you know, go down through it and.
Well, we've already denied people with political, I wanted to do political on that. And I think it should stay within the towns, whether it's the school, you know, the rec committee represented the kids who are playing basketball and baseball, and those types of event that they provided for, like the bus trips, you know. They're not, they're gone, but that marquee is still there, and it should be town, something to do with town business.
Right.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm leaning towards.
You know, whether it's fireworks at the town, or, you know.
So this way here, that's where they can look to see what's, what could be going on.
Yep.
You know, if there's anything, and.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna go on to mailbox items. The first thing I'm gonna bring up on the mailbox items, and Chris Remalad was CC'd on this, but the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, Donna White attended by Zoom. And the main item on the agenda, and group recommendation, was Dunbarton's project for around about a page's corner. It was submitted as the number-one recommendation this year.
Wow.
And it was listed as a $1.2 million job with a 2.8% projected inflation and additional 10% for indirects. So, we've gone up the list, Mike, we were in the top 10, and now it looks like we're number one. But it's projected out for 2023 to 2032 as their 10-year plan number-one item, so. That was good to see that it went up, I'm not sure that.
As I said, we didn't have, no one had to be killed over this.
Right. So I'm actually amazed to see how fast that went up the ladder myself.
And Chief, pass on to Sergeant Reminar and his continued diligence in keeping track of that project. Please pass on kudos to him.
I'm actually doing it right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. He really does some nice work.
He does.
Oh, here's the snapshot I was looking for. Okay. The next update I have here is a update to the board of selectmen from the town moderator and the town clerk. Absentee ballot figures were given to Lean for the CARES grant. She took care of that paperwork, and I signed it. They issued 610 ballots for the November 3 election. Of those, 597 were cast on election day. So that's quite a few. Three absentee ballots were received in the town clerk's office on election day. They are retained with the other election-day ballots, but cannot be included in the results. They've also given us the election payroll information to do for the Gopher Grant. And there's gonna be a recount for executive council on District 5. And there was a thank-you letter from the Secretary of State and the Attorney General, which is attached thanking everybody that did the hard work on the election. And just for the public's knowledge, I think there were 41 volunteers that day.
More than that, less paid by the column.
68 volunteers that day.
You can take the selectmen, the moderator, the deputy clerk, you're still over 60 on here, so it's a good number of people.
Good number of people on here. The total would have cost if people didn't donate their time would have been $4,374.38. It ended up costing us $1,740.84, so. Less than half had donated time for that election, so that's a big kudos to the volunteers in the town of Dunbarton for that. Okay, the next thing we have is we've got a couple of estimates for some lighting. We requested three, and got two bids back on some floodlights. And these floodlights were to light up the front yard and controlled by the panel with a photo sensor. There were a couple options on one bid here, option number one was an 80-watt floodlight, option number two was 150-watt floodlight. The grand total on this one was $1,545. And it looks like there's another bid in here for $1,557, couldn't get them much closer. And this quote was for 168-watt LED floodlight. It's the same as 150 watt. Looks like it's just slightly bigger. And then the second option was for an 84-watt floodlight with circuit breaker. Total job cost on this was $1,225. So it looks like there's two options here, one with a larger light, one with a smaller light. And Woody has made a recommendation to do it once and do it right with the larger light. Anybody want to take a look at these two quotes?
Nope.
Well, sure. They're very similar, so I don't really have an option of which one.
I've seen, this gentleman is working town, that gentleman is also from Dunbarton. I'm gonna spread the wealth out a little bit, I think he came in a little bit lower, that'd be my justification, I'd go with the lower one.
I'll put that one first, so we can see it for them.
I don't know. You're talking about a handful of dollars between the two.
It has to light up to park it along with the old, park their vehicles, it's pretty dark over there.
They're both reputable. You know, the lower, I don't know, a lower number would suffice, I would think. I know it's not a lot of money, but they're both reputable.
I go with Bob, do we go with the lower amount?
It's like buying a candy bar for the dollar or the dollar twenty-nine, you know, I mean, it's the same thing.
It actually is quite a bit cheaper, when he did his total on here, he included both options. So if you look at the materials, they're $545 for the one light, and then the laboring material up top is $675, so it's $675 and $545, so it's actually quite a bit less. So this one that we were talking about, that was less anyway, high-priority electric. I'll make a motion that we go with the option number 2, 150-watt floodlight for $545, and with the installation cost of $675. So that will be the motion with those two amounts in it.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lean, so you have that broken down on here?
Yep.
I'll circle the two options, okay?
Okay.
So it's $675, $545. So it ends up being $1,220. Okay. This item here in the mailbox is gonna be for trailers, the storage trailers. We had a company in town, Northeast Transport, look into it, and they could not find any storage trailers available for us. I had asked Woody at the elections to do some online searching for them, and he found a couple of them. Mike also spoke a little about it. He had a couple of prices here. They had a used 20-foot standard roll-off trailer for $31.20, and they had a brand-new one for $45.60. He also had another used one, a 20-footer, for $2,300, and a new one for $3,400 here.
So what size difference between the two, the first was how big?
They were all 20.
Oh, 20-foot.
But there was a $400 delivery fee on this one here. Let me read this second one. "At the moment, we are sold out of used containers. Unusually high freight has caused the shipping companies to suspend all container sales to December. I do not have a brand-new one. Once-used containers incoming. I used sell for $23, and a new one $34. Delivery be around 400 on ramp truck, or you can pick it up alone on the trailer, no charge. I have a waiting list for new equipment, we expect to be able to do one in about 30 to 45 days." So, they don't have one available, and this other company does mobile mods. So I see somebody raising their hand here, we'll have some discussion about it, and then we can make a decision. Looking at these trailers, having one being used by somebody else, if you had a clean source, it's one thing. But if you had somebody with grease and grime and all this junk in it, it's used. For the little difference in money, I would think that we would just go to the new one and know what we're getting.
That's what you're talking about now, is.
Yeah.
You don't know what you're buying when it's used.
Right.
And you know what you're buying when it's new.
I mean, if it's full of grease and everything, and we can't store anything clean in there.
You're not talking about a whole lot of money, that's not right, Charlie.
Chief, if you had something?
I took delivery of a one-trip 20-foot shipping container on Tuesday.
Yep.
If you want to take a look and see what they look like one trip, you're welcome to go up there, just open the doors. The door on the right is the one, or I can walk there with you.
Yeah, one trip is a brand-new.
That's the new one, yes.
And how, do you mind us asking?
It's clean, I paid $4,020 for it delivered, and I bought it from Storage Containers of New England.
Okay, and it's brand-new?
Yeah.
All steel construction?
Oh, yeah, you're welcome to go up and look at it.
Steel doors?
Steel doors with two latches on each side, got.
Let me just write this on the bottom, Chief, what's the name of it?
Storage Containers of New England.
Storage Containers.
Do you want to take a look at that one?
Yeah, you're welcome to look at it.
No, I'm talking about the company.
I have one at my house too, but I got it from PacVan, and I just rented, of New England. And you said it was $4,020 delivered?
$4,020 delivered on a ramp truck. It might be cheaper delivery on a 40-foot truck, but I couldn't get one of those in there. And I waited.
And they provided the ramp truck and everything in town?
Oh, yeah, they, Dave Brian dropped it. So I had to wait a couple weeks for it, but they did find, they're getting them periodically.
So this company was $3,800 delivered, which doesn't have one. And this company that has one is $4,560. But I'm thinking if he was happy with his, and we can get one from them, I would suggest going with the $4,020. And so I'll make a motion that we try and get a trailer from Storage Containers of New England for $4,020 delivered. And we'll have Woody coordinate the delivery of it, and.
Well, it'll give you your third quote.
It'll give us our third quote, and it'll also save us $560, so.
I can do, I can do. I mean, the difference between, the difference between old and new could be dramatic.
Right.
But the difference between new and new, you know, if you can save some money, you can save some money, it's the same-sized trailer.
Right.
It's Shipping Containers of New England is the name, not Storage.
Can I just ask a question?
Nope.
Where am I going to take this and pay it from, building maintenance currently, or?
A little about using the COVID money, because we've had several checks come in that we've signed off. Some of it was previous, but not all of it was used.
I have a spreadsheet going, a lot of that is already spent. But any excess that's not there, unless I tap into the 47 that I just recouped.
The thing is, we do have a maintenance line.
We do have maintenance money that.
We just got all of this too.
But so it's, so it's, we, it's a lot, we have a lot left.
We do.
Yeah, so either one Lean that you have to use, but I'd like to see that spreadsheet next week if we can. I'd like to have a mental figure in my head of how we're spending.
Yeah, it'd be nice, it'd be nice if it could come out of COVID, anything related to COVID, because this is all COVID purchases that we buy.
What was the company's name again?
Geez, Shipping Containers of New England.
Shipping.
Thank you for bringing that up to our attention.
It's shipping or storage?
Shipping, it's shipping, please. Oh, no, not storage.
Lean, I'll circle it on here, and I'll leave these together.
Okay.
And.
So if that quote comes in, we're given one execution, correct?
Motion's been made, and motion has been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Well, that takes care of that, and we saved a little money. And I know we're looking forward to putting all of the stuff in there from the election, and all the new purchases we've made on tables, and, what do you call them? Stations. Okay, the next thing on here, the Scoutmaster is sent out, I think everybody probably got one in their mailbox, they're doing a food drive in Dunbarton Saturday, November 14th. They didn't run it by the selectmen, but it's already on all the mailboxes, so I'll take it, so.
They've done that on almost on a yearly basis for the South several years.
Yeah. Originally, it was done at the transfer station. I think they found that for the people that are on the north end and the east, it was easier for the central location, which turns out there's adequate parking, and then people could come to the car in here and drop off their donations. So, worked out well for them.
Maybe with the little trailers.
So you're all set with them, going forward with that?
I am. It's pretty much done, so. Every Dunbarton person has that, so, yeah, I don't know if you can tell Mary or the other person, but.
I have to say, they do, they did respect the postal regulations too. They did not put them in the mailboxes or anything like that, so, kudos to the Boy Scouts for doing it right.
The other thing, the last thing I have here in this, Donna White from the building, building office and administrator, planning and zoning. She was looking for some clarification on the status of Class 5 Kelsey Road, where it starts, where it ends, where the turnaround is. Mike has spoken to her at length about it, and I think they're gonna have some meetings this week.
It's time to be determined, but next week, we're gonna have a non-public, because it may involve a legal action. But Bob, myself, and building department, town administrator will meet together, most likely with an attorney, if not separately. But we'll have a discussion to see, and give the planning boards some guidance from our perspective. And Dave, I'm sorry, but as in butter, we have to exclude you at this time.
That's okay. Okay. That's all I have on the agenda, we've got a non-public tonight. But first, I'm gonna open up the public comment. Nothing from Lean, Chief? Nothing, I'll bring it back to Lean.
I'm all set, thank you.
And the board?
Well, I just want to let the chief know, thank Chris Remalad for the, I got an email. They had to do with moving that sign on whatever damn road. I think I'm familiar with the people that called him, because they walked their dog, either one of them or both of them, every morning, in the traffic coming out of where, especially if you see a pickup truck with a flag on each side. If he's doing 60, he's going slow up that road, and those people are walking, and it's still not light enough out.
What time is that happening?
That happens between, I'm gonna say 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning. But there's a lot of traffic, and they move, they move coming out of where. So, kudos to Chris, you know, I'm glad that he's reached out, and I guess they got a hold of him before I could talk to you, so.
Yeah, that sign does work, it slows you down.
Yeah, Chris had told me about that, he does get things done.
You know, I use this sign coming into town, it's amazing. You see the sign flashing, and you think, "I'm not going that fast," you look down, and you actually are. You know, when you come up over that hump, and it's that little flat section there, it just seems like your vehicle's coasting, but you're thinking, "I'm not going this fast at that sign," and you look down, and it actually, you're going much faster than you think so. It really does help, I think, before you get into town, to wake you up. Mike, what do you have?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm gonna just look at the agenda one more time. Everything's been covered on there. Okay, I'm all good too?
And I make a motion to build a non-public for RSA 91-Alpha, colon, 3, paragraph.